Good morning, Happy New Year, and welcome to the January 8th, 2024, meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. As a reminder to all members, the microphones around the board table are very sensitive, and this meeting is being recorded and webcast. Now, to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act. Beverly?
This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, CL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Courier-News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Records in Newark.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise and join me in honoring our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the next phase of America, and to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen.
President, non-voting.
Essex.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Hunterdon.
Here.
Jersey City.
Present.
Middlesex.
Here.
Monmouth.
Present, non-voting.
Morris.
Here.
Newark. Ocean.
Here.
Passaic.
Here.
Somerset.
Here.
Sussex.
Here.
Union.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Governor's Office.
Here.
NJDOT.
Present.
JTransit.
Present.
Port Authority. Citizens Representative.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have 16 voting members present and accord.
Thank you, Beverly. Before we move on to the minutes, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Beverly, as this is her last board meeting before she retires on March 1st. Thank you, Beverly, for all that you have done over the years for the board and our committees. We appreciate all your work preparing for these meetings and making sure we always have what we need. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dave, who would also like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to briefly say a quick word, and certainly there will be more opportunities for the staff to thank Beverly, express our gratitude for her work over the years, and to wish her well in her retirement. I'd just like to say that, gosh, I don't quite remember how many years ago it was when Beverly came to us as a candidate for this position. It was a position that had had a little turmoil and some turnover. And when Beverly came in, I think we knew very quickly that we had the right person for the job. She's always approached it with a lot of patience and grace. And I know, as you know, at one point, I was Beverly's supervisor, and it was an easy task because she was always, always here for us. And again, I think the most remarkable thing is, in a position where sometimes things are getting changed at the last minute or added to an agenda at the last minute, although I do think that's improved over the years, she always took that in stride and never let it get to her and was always very patient. And, you know, just, as I said, there's going to be a lot more to say, but I just wanted to say thank you to Beverly for all of her great work over the years. And we certainly will miss you, and it will be difficult to find a replacement for Beverly. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, David. Next is approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of our November 13th, 2023 board meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll offer.
Motion, Warren.
Second ocean.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Any abstentions? All right. I'd now like to take this opportunity to present my report as the chair. Once again, thank you for coming to our annual meeting today. And thank you to Donna Rendero, Executive Director of the New Jersey Office for Planning Advocacy, for joining us today to speak about the New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Update. I also wanted to note that Hudson County has a new representative on our board. Hudson County's new county executive, Craig Guy, is replacing Tom DeGeece, who retired at the end of last year. Tom was a very active member of this board and served as chair in 2014 and 2015. Hudson County Engineer Tom Malavasi, who is with us here today, will continue to serve as the board alternate. And Tom, please convey our welcome and greetings to Craig.
I will, thank you.
This is the last meeting of the NJTPA that I will chair, as today we elect new officers for 2024 and 2025. I'm proud to say that over the last two years, we've accomplished some great things together. I want to thank my fellow board members and the NJTPA staff for all your work in planning our transportation system's future, getting projects funded, and providing a forum for regional discussion about key transportation issues. Safety has been a major focus of this board, and I'm happy to share that New Jersey saw an 11% decrease in fatal crashes last year, 77 fewer deaths than the year before, based on preliminary estimates from the state police. Driver, passenger, and pedestrian fatalities were all down. Unfortunately, there was an increase in cyclist deaths. Of course, any fatality is one too many, and that's why we'll continue to focus on improving safety across our region. We can do great things working together. As you know, this board recently adopted our largest-ever Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, which includes more than $14 billion over four years for projects and programs across our region. It's something we should all be very proud of. When I became chairman, President Biden had recently signed the bipartisan infrastructure law. Over the past two years, we've seen the benefits of that additional infrastructure funding, including doubling our funding for the last round of local safety program projects. Our region has also benefited from major federal grants, like the infra-funding for improvements around the port that you'll hear more about later, and new programs like Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is funding several safety planning initiatives in our region. And today, we'll take action to add more than $3 billion in funding to the TIP to advance the Hudson Tunnel Project, a key component of the Gateway Program. This critical infrastructure project will help people get where they need to go, create redundancies so that the aging existing tunnels can be repaired, and support the economy of our region, our state, and our nation. Securing and maintaining federal funding has been a key focus throughout my term and something I hope we can all continue working on together in the coming years. Thanks to this board and the efforts of staff at the NJTPA, New Jersey Transit, and the New Jersey Department of Transportation, we were able to add more than $248 million to the TIP this summer for four New Jersey Transit programs. This funding was made available through the Federal Highway Administration's August redistribution process, allowing New Jersey to take advantage of funds other states could not get authorized. The money funded much-needed projects across the region, including $15 million for a new bus terminal in the city of Passaic. In addition, the Governor's Office, the NJTPA, NJDOT, and New Jersey Transit were also able to secure $44 million that was subject to rescission in the Federal Fiscal Responsibility Act, signed into law in June. This was funding from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act, that our board approved allocating for New Jersey Transit Sustainability Project. And it's a great example of how this board, working together with folks and the staffs of our congressional delegation, can move quickly and accomplish something that really adds value to our region. During my tenure as chair, the NJTPA has also put an emphasis on better engaging municipalities and providing technical expertise through a variety of programs, including Complete Streets Technical Assistance, which is accepting applications right now. For the last two years, we've had a booth at the New Jersey League of Municipalities, which helped us meet local officials and promote these programs and other opportunities, including assistance we can provide when towns are seeking federal grants. As we bounce back from the pandemic, I've been fortunate to have the opportunity to attend the league and transaction conferences and to return to in-person events and meetings, including our board meetings, but also to maintain some of those efficiencies, for example, by keeping our committee meetings virtual and saving our impact on the carbon environment and our own time. The NJTPA has long been a leader when it comes to public outreach, but we've made recent advances in that area as well. When the pandemic hit, the NJTPA had just launched Up Next North Jersey, our young adult advisory group. These young people have become a great resource for raising awareness about our projects and programs and providing valuable insight for our long-range plan, which we'll be updating starting this year. It was my honor to host the group in Passaic County back in 2020, and I look forward to our continued work with them. Shortly after launching Up Next, the NJTPA also created the Outreach Liaison Program, which recruits community members to help conduct outreach for NJTPA projects and programs. This diverse group will also be key as we look to engage the public for more long-range, for the long-range plan update. As you know, it's incredibly important that we connect with our region's diverse populations so that our plan reflects their future needs. Before I wrap up, I also wanted to mention the NJTPA's work to create the Morris Canal Greenway. The Canal Working Group, coordinated by NJTPA staff, helps bring together key stakeholders to advance projects that one day will form the 111-mile continuous trail envisioned in the NJTPA's 2018 corridor study, connecting Warren County to Hudson County by way of Passaic County and everywhere else. I also want to thank you all again for the work that you've done. It's been an honor and a privilege to lead this board during a time of both great challenges and great opportunities. While we're all interested in advancing county and city projects that are important to our constituents, we've always been able to work together across party lines to advance regionally significant projects and discuss major issues that affect us all. I look forward to continuing to serve on the board and to carrying on the great work that we've been doing. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much. Any remarks from NJDOT this morning?
No.
Any remarks from New Jersey Transit?
I guess I have to say no.
You don't have to. All right.
Excellent.
That brings us to David. David, do you please present the executive director's report?
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks again for joining us. I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Bartlet for his leadership as chair of the NJTPA. He's really helped the NJTPA in our region accomplish a great deal over the past two years. On a personal note, I'd like to thank him and the rest of the board members for putting their trust in me and naming me executive director a little over a year ago in November 2022. During my time as executive director, and really in many years prior to that, Commissioner Bartlet has provided valuable insight, guidance on the day-to-day work of the NJTPA and our relationships with other agencies and officials. We'll say a little more about Commissioner Bartlet later in the meeting, but for now, I did just want to give you that personal thanks. Turning to the work of central staff, I wanted to remind board members and subregional and agency staff that Friday is the last chance to submit comments on the draft fiscal year 2025 Unified Planning Work Program that we provided you with. The work program is one of our core products. It guides the work of central staff, subregions, and the transportation management associations for the year that will begin on July 1st, 2024. The draft was distributed in December. Committees were briefed on highlights and on planned activities for the coming year. The work program will be on the joint committee agenda next month, and we'll be asking the board to consider adoption at the March meeting. One of our biggest undertakings in the next work program will be updating our long-range transportation plan, which was last adopted by the board in September 2021. There are many companion efforts that feed into the plan, excuse me, including new travel demand modeling and the air quality conformity determination. We expect the updated plan to go before our board for approval in September 2025, or we'll be here before we know it. Work on the plan is already underway. We're preparing to request for consultant proposals, one to assist with public outreach, the other to support development of the plan's financial level. Related efforts are underway to update our capital investment strategy and our congestion management process, both of which underpin the plan. We will be engaging with the board and RTAC in coming months to get your input on key priorities for the long-range plan. I'd also really encourage you all to get involved with our public outreach efforts, which will commence this spring. We plan to reach every corner of our region and residents of our many diverse communities. We know already that the plan must address the changing nature of transportation and commuting brought on by work-from-home policies and many other factors. And at the same time, there are new concerns about the impacts of burgeoning e-commerce, climate threats, the need for resiliency, and how best to accommodate growing preferences for walking and biking. We also know that the plan must place an even greater emphasis on improving safety, given the troubling trends for injuries and fatalities that we've seen. With the good news for this year, we still, you know, in the last few years, we had seen an uptick, and hopefully we'll continue to drive those troubling statistics down. But as we all say, the only acceptable number is zero. Work for improving safety is already taking place outside of the context of the long-range plan. As you know, we're working with eight subregions to develop local safety action plans. Other subregions are developing their own, with their own federal grants, and some already have a plan in place. These plans help our subregions identify their most pressing safety problems and effective solutions to those challenges. They also ensure that our subregions are eligible to apply for implementation grants under the Federal Safe Streets and Roads for All Program. In addition, several municipalities and the New Jersey Sports and Exposition Authority have received federal safety plan grant money, and we'll be working to coordinate our program with those efforts and offer assistance where we can. In the coming weeks, central staff and the consultant team will be reaching out to participating subregions to assist with creating local implementation committees. I encourage board members to take an active role in these committees whenever possible, as they will take the lead in tailoring safety plans to local needs, gathering input from local officials and the public. And certainly, the NJTPA staff thanks you all in advance for your help with this important work. Turning to the topic of addressing climate change, which, as I said, will be a key element of our updated plan, staff has been working with New York City, the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection on a climate and air quality plan covering the entire bi-state metropolitan statistical area. This effort, which is being led by the City of New York, is being funded with a climate pollution reduction grant awarded by the U.S. EPA in October. Project team has been meeting weekly since August and is working to develop a priority climate action plan for submission in March. That plan will give the bi-state region access to $4.3 billion set aside nationally for climate emission reduction measures. We're hosting an RTAC teleconference on January 16th, where the consultant will share more information with the subregions and seek their input. I should note that this plan and other similar ones were discussed at the December 1st Annual Meeting of the Metropolitan Area Planning, or MAP, Forum, a group made up of representatives of NPOs from New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. And you can learn more about that climate action plan that the NJTPA is involved with on our website. There's a link on the homepage at NJTPA.org. Beyond this important climate effort and the safety action plans, central staff is actively engaged in a host of other activities, fulfill tasks in our current work program as we pass the halfway point of the fiscal year. This includes data analysis and forecasting, supporting subregional and local concept development studies, and much more. You can find a summary of those activities in the central staff highlights that were distributed to the board on Friday. Finally, as the chair, finally, of special note, applications are due on February 2nd for Complete Streets Technical Assistance to Municipalities. Details to that are on our website, and with that, I'll conclude my report. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you, David. A lot going on. Now, we're going to hear from, excuse me, we're going to hear from our speaker, Donna Rendero, who has served as Executive Director of the New Jersey Office for Planning Advocacy since July 2019. Prior to that, she served as Chief of Administration for the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, or HMFA, Director of Community Planning at the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority, Acting Executive Director of the Office of Smart Growth, and Brownfields Policy Director. She has also worked with the Governor's Office of Economic Growth on Urban Policy. Today, she's going to tell us about the New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan Update. Donna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Lieutenant Governor and Secretary of State Tahisha Way, thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to talk to anyone who listens to me on the state plan. My name is Donna Rendero. Happy New Year, everybody. I'm the Executive Director of the State Planning Commission and the Office of Planning Advocacy. So, we're about to embark on the update to the state development and redevelopment plan. So, for those of you that are not familiar with the plan, it is a function of the State Planning Act. The State Planning Act was issued in the early 1980s as sister legislation to the Mount Laurel legislation that basically provided the fact that you can't have good planning for affordable housing unless you comprehensively plan your entire community. But one of the requirements of the State Planning Act is to develop a state development and redevelopment plan. And it's designed to represent a balance of conservation and economic growth opportunities. And balance is the key word here, because rightfully so, EDA's responsibility is for economic growth. DEP's responsibility is for environmental protection. DOT's responsibility is for the well-run roads and keeping them in good repair. But our goal of the State Planning Commission is to balance all of those goals. And sometimes, those goals can be competing. And how we balance those is by working with our state agency partners, doing comprehensive planning, and providing guidance to all levels of municipalities on, at all levels of government, municipalities, counties, state agencies, to come up with some comprehensive planning guidelines. The current state plan has eight goals that reflect these balances. So, there are things like providing conservation and open space and recreation. It's providing cleaning up of brownfields. It's providing economic growth opportunities. It's providing facilities and transportation networks within good working order at a reasonable cost. It promotes providing affordable housing at reasonable costs. So, there are eight current goals in the plan that really address these competing, sometimes competing, goals that the state, when you look as a whole of government, needs to be able to accomplish. With this update of the plan that we're doing today, or this year, we're going to be adding two more goals. One is on equity, and one is on climate change. The current plan, which was done in 2001, which was like lifetimes ago, addressed those two items, but didn't address it to the level that we need to address them today. So, we are elevating those two items to two more goals, so we will have 10 goals in the new plan. But the state plan is not regulatory. We can't force anyone to comply with the state plan. We're not the MLUL. We're not legislative in nature, even though our authority comes from legislation. We can't force a municipality to comply with the goals of the state plan, nor can we force counties or our state agency partners. We try to collaborate as best as we can, providing guidance. I kind of look at municipalities in one of three categories. Either they do good land use planning for the sake of good land use planning, and they don't need us. They don't, our guidelines are very similar to what they do. That's a handful of municipalities. There's another handful of municipalities that want to stay so far away from good land use planning, I don't want to waste my time with them. But the vast majority of municipalities want to do the right thing. They need guidance, and they need help in doing so. And that's really what the state plan does. It provides that guidance. And working with our state agency partners that can help implement the plan, there could be benefits for those municipalities. The process to update the plan will end with four products. The first is a plan document, which will have the written documentation about what those goals mean, the goals, the strategies, and some priorities in how to get to those, to get to those goals. We're required to do an infrastructure needs assessment, and we've engaged the services of Rutgers Blaustein Voorhees Transportation Center to do that infrastructure needs assessment. We are not going to reinvent the wheel here. We're going to be working with our state agency partners, looking at the analyses that have already been done, and we're developing the infrastructure needs assessment. The requirements that we need to do is not only our current needs assessment and quantification of those needs, but also a prospective look. And infrastructure includes a lot of things. Obviously, it includes environment, includes transportation, it includes energy, but it also includes things like higher education, corrections, housing, public health. And there, a lot of things are included in infrastructure. So, Phase 1 is well underway now, where we're doing environment, energy, and transportation. And we've been working with our state agency partners on those items. We're reviewing those plans that they currently have, and we're developing, and we're developing that analysis. The interesting and the tricky part on the infrastructure needs assessment is the prospective needs. There is not enough money on the planet to cover all of our infrastructure needs. We know that. So, how do we prioritize? Maybe it's a discussion of prioritization, and we're working on those items now. Phase 2 is going to be starting shortly. Then we have to do an impact assessment. That impact assessment will say, well, what happens if the plan doesn't happen? Are we going to put growth in preserved farmland? Are we going to ignore the environmental justice issues? What are the, what are the actions that the state plan can benefit, that utilizing the state plan can benefit from? And we haven't started that. We're probably not going to start that till mid-year this year. But our initial indication shows that most of the building permits have been issued in areas where the state plan encourages growth, and most conservation has been happening where the state plan envisions conservation. So, it's not perfect. It's not 100%, but we do think that the plan is making a difference. Then we have a state plan policy map, which frankly is the most controversial of all, and I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. But what's critical in this process is stakeholder engagement. What the rules require are 27 public hearings. Once we, and I'll talk about the timeline in a minute, but once we issue the preliminary plan, we have to do 21 public hearings in each county in 45 days. Then we take that, we go through a process called cross-acceptance, and we negotiate. And then we develop, as a result of that cross-acceptance process, a final draft plan, and we have to have six more public hearings as a result of it. But we don't think that's enough, and we think that's too late. So, we've spent a lot of time over the last six months getting some early stakeholder engagement and some outreach programs. So, what we did through the end of last year, we held eight stakeholder sessions, and that began with a community, a session at the New Jersey APA Conference in June. We have engaged the services of New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association, and they are assisting us in the community outreach. Those eight stakeholder sessions that we had are recorded. We've developed a, and we are utilizing a website called publicinput.com. And if you want, you can go to publicinput.com/NJStatePlan, and the recordings of those eight sessions are there. It's, they are very topical. They were divided by either affordable housing, transportation, and the like. So, those recordings are on that public input website. We also are engaging with our inter-agency stakeholders, county planners, and we've developed a subcommittee of the State Planning Commission. We meet with them monthly, because in order for these groups to support the plan, we wanted to engage in that with them early on. My understanding is, when we did it in 2001, we kind of just dumped the plan on everybody and said, here, adopt it. Obviously, that's not the way to go. So, we've been talking to our inter-agency partners, many of our state agencies that are on the State Planning Commission, as well as a number of other state agencies that don't have a seat on the commission. We've been working with the County Planners Association, and we've been working with the Subcommittee of the State Planning Commission to kind of coalesce and get some ideas around the table. We've offered to each of the counties, because the counties play a very, very integral role. The State Planning Act anticipates that the counties be the negotiating entities for their municipalities. So, they are, they're our key to talking to the municipalities. And so, we want to work very, very closely with our county partners and our regional partners. So, we've asked every one of the counties if they wanted an individual meeting. We've met with 18 individual counties in various different formats. Some were more formal like this, some were informal around the table with department heads. Whatever worked for the county is what we would, we would accommodate. We are also required to do population trend analysis and population projections. Again, what we don't want to do is reinvent the wheel. We want to be able to utilize, what we're thinking of doing is usually utilizing the MPO projections. They're on the same timeline. We're looking at 2050. All of the MPOs are looking at around 2050 as well. So, we've engaged New Jersey Future to analyze the MPO population projections. Again, why reinvent the wheel? Why have two separate sets of projections? It makes way more sense to have one, one kind of roadmap. They are looking at those pieces now, and they're almost done with that analysis. We have developed an interactive mapping tool, and the county training is underway. We've engaged Rowan University with that. The interactive- The interactive mapping tool is also on that public input website. We had two training sessions for the counties. 20 of the 21 counties participated in that, and those training sessions are there. And it allows a user to look at the site and add different layers of interest, so that when we start talking about the mapping discussions, they're going to know what layers are involved and what environmental issues there may be, for example. So right now, what's on there is just the existing conditions. We're currently working on mapping protocols on what we want to put in for the future, but right now, it's just the existing, it's just the existing mapping tool. Mentioned the infrastructure needs assessment. That's underway with Rutgers and Voorhees. We procure this public comment software. This public software, software is great because not only does it allow us to do surveys, which we have on the, the website, we also have a place for public comment. It allows people to, that are not comfortable using the internet, they can call an 800 number and leave a voicemail. And it not only consolidates all of those comments, it also geocodes them, so we know what area of the state they come from. This has been a great tool, and the more we work with it, the more we find it's great. And we started to work on the plan. We have internally the goals and the strategies are kind of going around our internal stakeholder group, and, and while also APA is doing that writing, they're already starting to write the priorities. And we've spoken to anybody who will listen. We've been, we've had sessions at the League of Municipalities. We've done webinars with the League of Municipalities. Many regional groups we've met with, I believe at the last count, it was a little over 1,100 people we reached. But we did not get to many of the underserved and underrepresented communities, and we're making a special effort now to develop a, a program where we will reach out to many underrepresented communities throughout the state. I like the idea. We want to get the youth involved, so I'm offering it to you. If you want me to get your youth, your youth advisory committee together, I will absolutely, because I'm not going to be here in 2050. They're going to be, I think somebody said that. It's, 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 it's their, it's their role. Also, one of the sub-objectives I have to reaching the youth is, most youth don't understand that there is a planning career that they could take. And if they really, truly want to impact their day-to-day quality of life, everything's got a land use implication. So kind of a sub-goal of my own is, is having the youth understand that the real way of impacting your community is getting involved in land use. That's just, just a little commercial. So in the first half of this year, now, this is a very aggressive timeline. I would be really, really, I would be really happy if I can make it, but understand that I'm not going to risk a good product for this timeline. I'm hoping to get this plan adopted by the end of this year. So in the first half, we're going to publish the preliminary plan and preliminary mapping. We're going to go through the cross-acceptance process. We're going to complete the, the INA Phase One and begin Phase Two and begin the impact assessment. The first step that we have to do is, on Friday, we are sending out 3,500 notices to county government, county planning board, county clerks, municipal government, municipal clerks, and municipal planning boards, interested parties, our state agency partners, and federal, appropriate federal agencies. And we have to give them a 60-day notice that we're starting this process. That's going out hopefully this Friday. We anticipate the preliminary plan, with all the planets aligning and everything working, to have the commission approve the preliminary plan at their April, I believe it's the third meeting, it's the first Wednesday, and we are looking to publish the preliminary plan on April, August, yeah, April 8th. Then we wait for 45 days. Counties have some work to do in those 45 days, but we don't. But then we have to do those 21 public hearings in 45 days. Canvas state, I'm going to go pack a bag, work north to south or south to north, and, and just get to every, every community that we can get to. Cross-acceptance is, is where the counties become very intricately involved, and they tell us, and they represent their municipalities and tell us what they agree with and what they disagree with. Obviously, we don't need to talk about the agreements. Where they disagree, we negotiate. And again, nobody on this planet is going to assume that we are going to 100% agreement with 563 municipalities, 21 counties, 17 state agencies. That we know is not going to happen, but the, the State Planning Act envisions in the language is the highest level of consistency we can get. When we get that, we will incorporate that into a final draft plan. We will have six more public hearings, and that, at that point, the commission can then consider adopting the plan. Oops. Implementation, the reason we really are shooting for the end of this year is, we have a lot of support from this administration to update the plan. But as you all know, a plan is only as good as its implementation. And we're hoping that 2025 will be the year of implementing the plan. There's a lot of education around what we have to do to implement the plan at the local level. Here, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but there are some statistics here that show that the world is very different, and this is, these are mostly on housing, but the world is very different than it was in 2001. Household size is smaller. The impact of schools is different. So what we're hoping for is that we can educate local planning boards and zoning boards that things are very different. New Jersey is ranked number one in the, in the country in terms of people aged 18 to 34 still living with their parents, 45%. That's huge. That's why the housing numbers, the average household size hasn't gone down more than these numbers are showing. But what we also want to do is, is get the message across that, why are we afraid of children? We should not be afraid of children. Children are our lifeblood. They are our diversity. They are our future. So let's keep the kids in, in the communities. Let's provide for them, and hopefully that would create a more diverse and vibrant set of communities. So that's all I have, although I think I missed one quick, oh, my map was not in there.
You promised us a map, a controversial map.
Yeah, it's a controversial map, and I thought I had that slide in here. Anyway, the map is a, basically a pictorial version of where the state encourages growth and conservation. And if you're familiar with the state plan map, there's, there are different planning areas within the state. Planning areas one and two are where we encourage growth. Planning areas four and five are where we discourage growth. But on the map, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened to it, but you see, I call it the state plan sash that goes from the Newark area down southwest into the Camden area. And you could see that that is where the urbanized areas are. And the funny part of it is, we have maps that go back to 1935, 100 years ago, and they look almost the same. The, the green space, the pine lands, the highlands are all, they're all, it all looks very similar. So it kind of is our legacy, but it's also what we want to make sure either we maintain, we want to encourage redevelopment, we want to encourage public transportation, we want to encourage the vibrancy, the walkability that a lot of our younger kids now are looking to, to do. We also want to encourage that and make a statement that says that good land use is a path toward prosperity for a municipality, so that you can link that economic growth. But the challenge is going to be, how do you do it both? We have, obviously, climate change issues that, if you think of the barrier islands, also is a large portion of a $40 billion tourism industry. So how do you make sure that you are maintaining that tourism that New Jersey's identity is, and yet protect the residents and the businesses that live where they're going to be very vulnerable? So that's the challenge we have. I look forward to working with everybody here, and, and I guess, I don't know, if you want to take questions or?
All right. Thank you very much, Donna. Yeah, well, you, we missed the controversial map, but that was.
I know. I wonder if it was like, I don't know, maybe it was Freudian.
It's probably this as well. Too controversial.
It is, by the way, on our website. It's also, I believe, on the public input website.
But this is great, and it's right up the alley of the kind of public outreach and public input work that we're trying to do more of here as an MPO. We're definitely going to get you connected with our youth, our up-next youth group. I know that all of us, whatever kind of county or municipality we come from, that notion that you touched on at the very beginning of balance is a constant challenge for all of us. I know that in Passaic County, I'm often hearing from my constituents up county in the Highlands area, that the balance is off between conservation and business development. And that's going to be an important part, like a lot of things of what you're doing. So do any members of the board have any questions for our presenter?
And if there's any municipality or county wants, wants me to come out and do either this as a formal presentation or just sit around the table and chat, the offer's out.
What I would suggest, anybody who wants to connect with Donna and doesn't get a chance to here, reach her through central staff, and we'll definitely try and get you out and speaking to anybody who wants to hear from you. So thank you very much. That was great. All right. That brings us, for those of you who are following on, to Letter H in the agenda, Committee Reports and Action Items. For project prioritization, I'm going to call on Commissioner Jack Kelly to deliver the PPC report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I give that report, I just want to add my thanks to Beverly for the job she's done for all of us. I know when I was just a brand-new member here, I was listening to everybody up here give their committee reports, I was amazed how smart everybody was up here. And I've come to find out since then, we're smart because we get these kind of things all done for us at, at the meetings, and that all comes from Beverly. She's been a great help, a great asset, and while I'm told her already in another room, I'm very, very happy for her. I'm very sad for myself, becoming the next chair, that I don't have that asset. But we will find somebody that will be able to do the job. And I thank you for talking about Beverly early in the meeting. Okay, now I will give my report. I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. At the December joint meeting, the committee considered one action item. It concerns a minor amendment to the Transportation Improvement Authority to add the Hudson Tunnel project as requested by the Gateway Development Commission. While this is classified as a minor amendment, it is a major milestone in advancing this critical project. The commission has received engineering approval from the Federal Transit Administration and anticipates an award of up to $6.88 billion in capital investment grant program funds, with, with half of the funding programmed in our tip and the other half programmed in the tip of the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council. The project will use Federal Transit Administration funds for the engineering, right-of-way, and construction phases. This action item will allocate $400 million this fiscal year, $350 million in 2025, $350 million in 2026, and $334 million in 2027. Another $2 billion is being programmed for the unconstrained years of the tip. This is the sole action item on today's agenda. At the joint meeting, we also heard a presentation by central staff on a unified planning work program for fiscal year 2025, which Dave discussed earlier. The UPWP includes continued work to refine NJTPA's project prioritization and scoring process, ensuring that the NJTPA criteria meets federal regulation, aligns with performance targets, and addresses the region's needs. This two-year effort will help shape the project prioritization process for selection of projects and future tips. The work plan also includes continued programs to support the development of priority local projects through the Freight Concept Development Program and the Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Road Programs. As Dave noted, comments on the UPWP are due at the end of this week on January 12th. This concludes the Project Prioritization Committee Report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I love it when a minor amendment has 10 digits. But that's what it is, and as you heard from the committee report, we have one action item from this committee on today's agenda. It's a minor amendment, the FY 2024 through 2027 tip to add the Hudson Tunnel project as requested, as requested by the Gateway Development Commission. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second.
Second. Chair to see.
All right. Any comments from members of the board? Any comments from members of the public on this action item? Hearing none. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right. Now we will hear from Commissioner Charlie Kenny to give the Planning and Economic Development Committee report.
Thank you, Chairman, and Happy New Year's to everybody. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the December joint meeting, we heard a presentation on the Safe Systems Approach by Amy Kaminsky, Technical Programs Manager at the Federal Highway Administration's New Jersey Division. Ms. Kaminsky said the goal of the Safe Systems Approach is to eliminate fatal and serious injuries by focusing on some key principles, including that we must take into account that despite their best efforts, humans still make mistakes, believe it or not, that all road users share responsibility for safety, and that redundancy is crucial to this. Ms. Kaminsky emphasized the need for collaboration among all levels of the government and the public to focus on creating a culture of safety in agencies and communities. She cited successful implementation of the Safe Systems Approach in countries like Norway, France, Sweden, Netherlands, and Australia, which have seen significant decreases in fatalities as a result. Her presentation is available on the NJTPA website on the topic of safety. Staff also provided an update on the ongoing effort and funding opportunities for local safe, safety action plans, which, as Dave mentioned, the NJTPA is helping several counties develop. Earlier this, this fall, these plans were the subject of a series of webinars and in-person workshops. The webinar recordings can be found on the NJTPA website. Also at the meeting, staff briefed the committee on NJTPA's Prime 2.0 update. This tool provides a comprehensive library of completed transportation studies and their findings that can be used to assess current needs and plan future projects. The update includes an enhanced user interface, improved data management, and new documentation. The updated tool is now available for use by, by our subregions and member agencies, who are encouraged to incorporate their regional and subregional studies into the system. And if I could just, Eric, if I could see you after the meeting, just so I don't forget later on, while I'm thinking of it, Beverly, thank you very much for all the help and guidance that you have been in my time here. You remind me, and I found Dave's comments very interesting because I wouldn't expect it, you remind me of like a calm ocean with a nice, cool breeze, never gets rough, it never gets, you know, a, a bad, a bad trip. So I, I thank you for everything that you've done to, to make everything run smoothly here. And then just to the chairman, also to you, I know that coming in, we weren't meeting, we were still going through the COVID process, and you've led us through that and got us back to meeting in person, and I thank you for your help and guidance during that time. That's all I have, Chair. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Charlie. Um, now I'll call on Commissioner Jason Sarnoski, who will give the Freight Initiatives Committee report.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'm going to start by, uh, thanking and congratulating Beverly on her retirement. Um, with any organization, there's always one person that once you find them, you know, they are the ones you can go to when you have a question, you have a comment, you have, you need something. And that was Beverly. Uh, and now I got to refine that person here. So I just want to thank you, Beverly, for all your time and everything you did personally for me, um, and for this board. And, uh, second, I'd be remiss if I did not also, uh, thank our outgoing chair, Commissioner Bartlet. Um, he has been an outstanding leader over the last two years. Um, I, I struggle to remember a more fair and, uh, you know, balanced person, uh, leading this board, um, always, uh, open for any questions, comments I had or concerns, and certainly helped, uh, Warren County in, in many aspects, uh, as chairman of this board. So thank you, Commissioner. Um, with that, I'm pleased to report on the December 18th meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, which featured updates on the New Jersey State Freight and Rail Plans. Our first speaker, Janice Marine O'Doyle, from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, provided an update on the federally mandated statewide freight plan, which the Federal Highway Administration approved in 2023. The plan supports the growth of New Jersey's freight industry and the incorporation of new technologies and infrastructure into the system. The state must update its plan every four years. Ms. Doyle introduced project consultant Stephen Charamonte of WSP, who outlined the plan, noting that short-term actions included finalizing critical freight corridors, supporting data needs, and enhancing support for state freight funding sources. Excuse me. Longer-term actions involve initiatives like addressing statewide truck parking needs, increasing marine highway services, and preparing for extreme weather risks. Next, Lou Millen from New Jersey Transit, Transit spoke about federally mandated state rail plan. He said the plan is in, needed to articulate a vision inventory for the rail network, identify needs, engage stakeholders, and set the stage for grant funding applications. Alan Kearns of the, uh, also of New Jersey Transit then provided an overview of the plan's development. It is expected to be released this month for public review, with the goal of submission to the federal government in March. Also at the meeting, the committee heard that NJDOT will be holding freight advisory committee meetings in March, June, and November, and that the NJDOT Office of Multimodal Grants has received 18 applications for the fiscal year 2024 rate of rail freight assistance program. In addition, the Port Authority shared that the $220 million project for upgrading road access to Port Newark and Elizabeth, which received a $44 million federal infra grant, is scheduled for completion by mid-2028. This concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason. We turn now to the general public participation section of the meeting. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The light on the timer will go from green to yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then red when three minutes has been reached. We ask that you keep your comments within the allotted time, and we remind you that they'll be part of the public record. Uh, we will start with members of the public who are here in the room and have signed up to speak. And who is that?
We have no one present today who's signed up.
Okay. Uh, then we'll next call on those who signed up to participate remotely via Zoom.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one person signed up remotely to speak, Mr. Andy Weiss. Mr. Weiss, you have three minutes.
You there, Andy?
Good morning, Board. Sorry about that. Can you, I would like to report that NJ Transit needs to end the relationship with the New Jersey Department of Transportation. NJ Transit needs to become an independent agency in state government and separated from the careless NJDOT. NJDOT concerns me. I blame the NJDOT and NJ Transit for messing up the funding and environmental impact statement for the NJ Transit Hudson-Berg and Light Rail extension to Bergen County. We have been waiting to extend the Hudson-Berg and Light Rail to Bergen County for 25 years. NJ Transit, what is the status of the new environmental impact statement for the Northern Branch project, which extends light rail to Bergen County? I want a detailed answer, not a one-line answer. Please come prepared with detailed answers and not a one-line answer. Give us an estimate when the EIS will be sent to, back to the Federal Transit Administration. The permitting dashboard shows Northern Branch project with a closed status. Why is the status of the Northern Branch project in a closed state on the permission, permitting dashboard? NJ Transit, don't just tell us we need funding. Give us a professional answer with specifics and actions that you have taken this year. I would also like to welcome and congratulate, uh, the new Hudson County Executive Craig Guy. Uh, Craig, I would like to politely ask you or your office to follow up with NJ Transit and get a detailed status regarding the Northern Branch project. Hudson County and Bergen County need this critical project. NJ Transit, we need detailed answers about the Northern Branch status at the next NJTPA meeting. I will ask again and expect you to give the public a detailed answer. We need accountability to NJ Transit, and this 25-year delay is completely unacceptable. I also blame the former NJ Transit Board Chair and NJDOT Commissioner for the project being rescinded by the FTA. How come she never watched this critical project closely and allowed it to be rescinded by the FTA? Thank you.
Andy, thank you for your comments. Um, since those are the only folks who, who signed up, I do want to, uh, just open the floor for anybody in the room who didn't sign up and wants to make public comment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, sorry, I interrupt. Uh, I want to follow up. As a representative of Bergen County, I concur with the caller. Uh, the county is extremely frustrated with this process with NJ Transit and believes that there's merits to, uh, moving this project forward, Hudson County. Um, again, I, we do agree with that caller. Uh, we have almost a million people in the residents, been going on for 25 years, don't get a, a sense of progress. Uh, there's no communication, so it was important that, uh, we say this in public. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, before I pose the public question, I assume there's no one here, uh, who wants to make a public comment. Um, but, uh, either Transit or DOT have anything to add at the meeting?
Uh, no, sure, we'd be happy to have, have a conversation. Uh, there's, there's, um, many complications here. Uh, you know, as much as we're moving billions of dollars around for projects, there's a broad suite of needs. Are continuing to work with the Federal Transit Administration to, you know, address how we could restart this process. So, you know, far more than we can talk about here, but happy to have that.
We would encourage you to reach out to the County Executive of Bergen. Um, I think that's what's needed, better collaboration and communications with the county. Uh, we have not been getting that. It's kind of been radio silence. So, um, again, we encourage the communications. Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, and we'll do the same in Hudson, and we'll facilitate a meeting with County Exec and Transit to discuss.
Great. Very good. I count on all of you to follow up, uh, after the meeting and, uh, move that forward. Because where I come from, we call it the Hudson-Bergan Passaic Light Rail. We're, we're full of hope. Um, uh, although maybe we should know better by now. Uh, that brings us to letter J on the agenda. For those of you following along, the report of the Nominating Committee and Election Exec, of Executive Committee. Uh, at the November 13th board meeting, I announced that Bergen County Executive Jim Tedesco and Monmouth County Commissioner Tom Arneone had agreed to join me on a committee to seek out and review nominations for the NJTPA officers for the next two years. We met on November 21st and agreed unanimously to recommend the following slate of officers for the 2024, 2025 term. Chair, Ocean County Commissioner Jack Kelly. First, Vice Chair, Middlesex County Commissioner Charlie Kenny. Second Vice Chair, Warren County Commissioner Jason Sarnoski, and Secretary, Morris County Commissioner Stephen Shaw. In accordance with the bylaws, after the election, the new chair will appoint the third vice chair. Are there any other nominations from the board? Seeing none, I'll need to ask each, uh, member whose name I just, uh, uh, spoke out. Do you accept your nomination?
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much.
Uh, may I have a motion to approve the slate of candidates?
Make a motion.
Union seconds.
Thank you. Any comments from members of the board? Any comments from members of the public on the nominations or the election? All right. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Great gratitude, yes.
Passaic?
With great relief, yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes, thank you.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
Kentucky?
Yes.
Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Representatives?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We go to the.
All right. Congratulations, everyone. I will now turn the meeting over to our new chair.
Chair. First, thank you all very much. And I do have an official type of business to do as my first act as chair. I would like to appoint Union County Commissioner Betty Jane Kowalski as the third vice chair. Commissioner Kowalski, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. I want to thank the Board of Trustees for entrusting me with the position of chair. I am eager to continue the great work of the NJTPA. I am honored to follow in the footsteps of Commissioner Bartlet, Commissioner De Filippo, and all the past chairs who has served the NJTPA so well. While this board faces many challenges, I know we're up to the task. I look forward to working with my fellow trustees, the NJTPA staff, and the residents we serve to improve transportation across our region. I'm excited to lead the board as we look to update our long-range plan, which will guide this agency's work into the future. I have more to say about my vision for my term as chair at our next meeting. But for now, it's time to say thank you to our outgoing chair, John Bartlet. Let's cue the video.
Order wolf.
Beverly, don't make me look bad. That's what it says.
Passaic County Commissioner John Bartlet wraps up a two-year term as NJTPA chair with some remarkable accomplishments. At the top of the regional list, adoption of a new $14 billion Transportation Improvement Program, doubling funds for NJTPA safety programs, and completing the region's first active transportation plan. Chairman Bartlet's Passaic County highlights include the Passaic County Strategic Infrastructure Investment Study and working to secure $15 million in federal funding from the Main Avenue Bus Terminal in Passaic.
I think, for me, what's been most personally rewarding is watching all the ways in which TPA staff support our local partners and support the counties that are part of TPA. So much of what has grown and thrived at TPA over these last couple of years has been that local aid and the technical support, so that towns that might not have contemplated filing an application now can access some of the federal funding that enables them to do projects that are hyper-local and super-important. We're right in the middle of that five-year period of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. We need to keep doing what we're doing in terms of accessing those federal funds every time an opportunity comes up. I, what I have been doing locally in Passaic County, and what I encourage my board colleagues to do, is to remind our local elected officials periodically, hey, this opportunity is there, that opportunity is there. And then to get connected to TPA and get that technical support that really makes those applications shine.
Well, I'm from Ocean County, and John Bartlet's from Passaic County. These are two very different places with different challenges. But the region needs bridges, roads, and public transportation, services that are used by everybody, no matter where you live or work. Chairman Bartlet gets that. He may be a Passaic County guy, but he's a champion for the entire region, and we all appreciate that focus that he brings to the table here.
We've got folks of both political parties, and we work together with the interest of the region in mind, and we support one another when it comes to those local projects that each of us want to be able to show our own constituents, hey, look, here's something that we're doing. We're adding value in our county and our municipality. But the fact that this collective from Ocean County to the New York border is working together to make that happen for all of us, I really, I think it's an example for how to govern.
Okay. Now, John, if you'll join me and Dave at the podium, we have a little presentation to make here. Okay. John, once again, we thank you for your dedicated service to the people of our region and for your tireless advocacy for the importance of transportation. Please accept this token of our appreciation, which reads in part, "In recognition of John's distinguished leadership as NJTPA Chairman 2022, 2023, Chairman Bartlet oversaw increased federal investment in the region, guiding the adoption of the $14 billion Transportation Improvement Program. That includes safety, road, bridge, transit, and related projects and programs. Chairman Bartlet also led the board's approval of a doubling of funding for the Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Roads Program. He has been a vocal advocate for advancing gateway program improvements. We thank Chairman Bartlet for his efforts, and we look forward to his continued service on the NJTPA board." Let's all give a round of applause. Looked at my first picture as chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and David, and everyone. Um, I, you know, I really truly fell into this. I'm a lawyer and not a engineer or a, uh, you know, anyone with any expertise in, you know, all the things that so many folks around the room do. But I came on to the Passaic, then the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, and I was the guy willing to schlep Newark for a meeting once a quarter. And it has really been transformational, uh, because this is such a great group. I know we were talking in David's office before we got started. Um, I have to think hard to remind myself the party affiliation of the people around the room, because we're not here to score political points. We're all here to accomplish something for our counties, for our constituents. But we do that in a way that recognizes the regional importance of everything that happens here. Um, and I think that's really, as I said in the video, really is a model for how to govern, uh, because we're out to support our constituents, but we're also out to accomplish things of, of consequence and of scale for our region. Uh, and again, like I said, I'm a, I'm a lawyer. I didn't come to this with expertise in the subject matter. But the more time you spend on this board, the more you realize the work that we do and the things that we're able to fund are how everything else happens. It's how you get to the job, the recreation, the school, the opportunity, all that other stuff that happens in society happens because we can get there, by transit, by road, uh, you know, and just the range of things here. We're talking about everything from, uh, you know, 111-mile walking trail to the interface of, of, uh, sea freight and, and land freight in our region. It's really an extraordinary breadth of work that we get to do. Uh, it's an extraordinary opportunity for all of us as elected officials to bring resources into our county. And we're fortunate, uh, you know, from David and Beverly to everyone else, to have an extraordinary team here backing us up, making us look good, making us look articulate when we deliver our, uh, committee reports. Um, and I'm really looking forward to continuing on this board, because the work that we do is of such great consequence to our region, and we've got so much more, especially in these next, next couple of years, with continuing IIJA funding and with Gateway, finally moving. IIJA funding and with Gateway finally moving forward. We're going to continue to do extraordinary things, and I'm very grateful for everyone here that's part of that with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, we come to my favorite part of these meetings. The next meeting of the NJTPA Board will be held at the NJTPA offices in Newark on March 11, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. Now, I'm going to go off script just a little bit. One of the things I'm going to discuss in the weeks ahead is bringing the ability to have committee meetings back here in person. But I'm going to do that through the chairs of those meetings and not make it mandatory, but offer it to those who wish to take part in person. All of our board meetings will be held in person right here, except for the annual meeting and the town of the Chairman. And now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
De moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stay here. Thank you all.